Start the meeting. Stand for the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Mayor Leahy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Minutes. Need a motion to approve the regular scheduled and the special meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee, June 2nd, 2021, June 7th, 2021. Place them on file by Ms. Martin, second, and by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor, say aye. Permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent.
There's an important item that you missed at 5.1. Mayor, was that intentional?
Oh, yeah, I did. Ratification of collective bargaining agreement with SEIU.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Hall, if you can provide the headlines for the committee. The recommendation is approval as written. Dr. Hall?
Your chair, thank you, Dr. Boyd. The committee in front of you is a three-year proposal for the clerks, which runs retroactive to July 1st, 2020, which effectively calls for a 2% raise for this current school year, another 2% raise next year, and a 2% raise the following year, along with some position upgrades. And the clerks have already ratified and signed this agreement.
Any questions, Ms. Clark?
No questions, just motion to approve.
Motion approved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, we do have a member of the SEIU negotiating team, and I want to publicly thank the SEIU for all of the collaboration through what has been an extraordinarily difficult year. Congratulate you on the three-year contract, and in doing so, thank all of our employees for incredible work this year. This is the last day of school, marks the last day of school of what has been an extraordinarily difficult year, and I think all of our staff has responded admirably. Congratulations on the three-year contract, and thank you for the collaboration from SEIU during these tough times.
Thank you. 5-2, permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor. The permission to enter is before the committee within the packet. Recommendations, approval as written. Staff is available for any questions.
Any questions on permission to enter? The motion will approve by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
5-3, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. Before you is an extension or renewal of the contract with Robin Desmond, with adjustments made accordingly for her position of chief academic officer. Again, recognition of Ms. Desmond's extraordinary work during these difficult times. She also worked this past year in absence of a contract. In virtue of the difficulties of these times and the financial circumstances we were facing, the recommendation is approval as written. Dr. Hall is available to share any highlights or questions that the committee may have.
Any questions by the committee? Motion, no, Ms. Clark?
Motion to approve as written.
Motion by Ms. Clark to approve, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call. Yep. Ms. Doherty?
Yes, I'm not going to be approving this contract. I think that although Ms. Desmond has worked very hard, and I appreciate her efforts, I believe the prior contract had an inappropriate 9% increase, so I'm going to be voting no on this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, quickly from the chair, too, I appreciate all the work that Ms. Desmond's done in this role. I just had an issue with the contract, too, so that'll be my decision for that, too. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Four yeas, two nay, one absent, approved.
5-4, Mr. Superintendent.
Let me take this opportunity to welcome Liam Skinner to his new role as chief schools officer. He will begin his new position on July 1. Before you is the contract for Mr. Skinner to transition from his role as the principal of the daily school to his new role as chief schools officer as of July 1. The recommendation is approval as written.
Any questions on the contract? Mr. Dakota, now, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say that we have, I don't know when it started, but we have started putting in 2.25% raises in all our contracts, and I find this concerning. I know that in the past, we didn't do that with the contracts, and I think it puts us in a difficult position when we're negotiating with our unions, because over a three-year time span, that equals, you know, 6.75% increase, which, you know, for many of our unions, they'd like to see that happening for their contracts. And these are people, frontline people, not making, you know, the big bucks that our chiefs are making. But with that said, I am going to support this appointment. I think Mr. Skinner will do a great job. I also noted that in the contract, he has a clause that he could go back to his principalship. I forget the date exactly. It's May of 2022, I believe, if he so desires, and I'm fine with that. So I just think going forward, maybe we need to rethink how we're doing the contracts. I don't know how we get into the habit of including raises in the contracts for our highest-paid employees, but it's something I think is worth discussing. So with that, I would make a motion to approve this contract.
Motion by Ms. Doherty to approve, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
5-5, amendment to the contract to chief operating officer. We had a mix-up tonight on posting between the clerk's office and the school office, so without getting into a long, drawn-out story, there was some sort of mix-up. It didn't get posted in time, made the decision that we shouldn't have the meeting because it didn't meet the open meeting laws. So, but we can have a discussion on the floor about this if we wish to. So do we wish to do this out in the open? Anybody fine with that? Yes, no? You guys look puzzled, so. Too far brain off, it says we can't have a discussion about this. Do we want to do this now?
My only concern is I had materials that I didn't bring with me, so I don't feel I'm prepared to discuss it on the floor. I mean, I've got, you know, quite a bit of notes and the job description with highlighted areas and things like that, so that would be my concern about discussing it. I'd be going off the top of my head. I don't know what other people.
But yeah, Ms. Martin?
I mean, I think in light of that, it makes sense for us to postpone this and schedule an actual executive session and do it appropriately.
So why don't we schedule tomorrow, we'll schedule a meeting as quick as possible, try to get this wrapped up by the end of the month? Everybody available by the end of the month? Okay. All right. Thank you. I do, okay, so that's, if, permission to enter. So I do have a memorial, if we could have a memorial and dim the lights. I got to do the memorial first before we dim the lights. So I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Mr. Terrence McCarthy. Terry McCarthy, beloved husband of Kathleen O'Donnell McCarthy, passed away unexpectedly at his home following a brief illness. He was 75 years old, born in Lowell, June 26, 1945. Terry was the son of the late James P. Viola Muldoon McCarthy. He attended the Immaculate Conception Grammar School, graduated from Lowell High School. Terry went on to receive his degree from Lowell Technical Institute, now UMass Lowell. Terry has strong work ethic that was instilled in Terry from a very early age through the family business, J.P. McCarthy &amp; Sons. In his early life, he worked at the Lakeview Amusement Park, later Tewksbury State Hospital. For years, he worked at the funeral business for Jack McNamee and Frank McCabe. For 35 years, Terry was employee of Middlesex County Sheriff's Department, starting out at the Barica House of Correction and retiring as superintendent of the Cambridge Jail. In his retirement, Terry, along with his partners, Tom McKay, Leo Kriegen, formed Mill City Management. Company operated Lowell Memorial Auditorium, known as the Three Amigos. They had a very successful 18-year run with top entertainment for Lowell. Terry served on many numerous charitable boards and was involved in many fundraising golf tournaments. Terry would be deeply missed. He is survived by his wife Kathleen, his two sons, Sean and Karen McCarthy of Bridgewood, New Jersey, TJ McCarthy and Mary Beth Kazangian of Lowell, his daughter Patty McCarthy of Boston, and his three grandchildren, Annie, Katie, and Sean McCarthy. We can dim the lights?
Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
May I ask?
Yep.
May I have one also?
Sure.
I didn't prepare for this, but I'm compelled to say this memorial to Mr. Saw Ren. Why I feel that I want to do it right now, just because I just knew that of his passing, and why it is important, because he is, he was 78 years old, and when I met him a few years ago, he came in, I think he came into America less than, maybe around 10 years ago. When I first met him at the function in Lowell, I asked what he did in Cambodia. He was a teacher from the province where I grew up. When I asked about my father, my father was also a teacher, and he knew right away, and at that moment, I felt that he was the only man in the world who knew my father, so I felt connected with him. Unfortunately, he has been, he has always been an active member in the community. He has always been attending every event. Wherever I go, I saw him. So unfortunately, he passed away from a car accident. He was walking around his house, around Stevens Street and Parker, and the car hit him. He was taken to the hospital, and he was pronounced dead on Thursday, and I feel that he is going to be missed by the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Into motions. Motion by Jackie Doherty requests Superintendent provide the committee with an inventory of each school's inoperable windows, windows needing shades and screens, as well as HVAC issues, including cost estimates. Request Mayor convene a meeting between the city and Lowell Public Facility Subcommittee to address and report and develop a shared cost plan and a timeline for repairs. Seconded by Mr. Dakota. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that what prompted this for me, which I know we all experienced that extreme heat wave of last week, and the number of emails and calls and texts I got from parents and staff about the conditions in our schools. I think we all recognize that we are going to continue to have heat waves and extreme weather conditions. That is the reality of the world we live in. We also know from my conversations with people in facilities and different principals around the city, they are aware of what windows don't work, what windows need shades. Like I had one first-grade teacher say to me, "The morning sun pours in. If I could just pull shades down, that would make a huge difference in keeping the temperature down in my classroom." So that's what prompted me thinking about, since each school knows what they need, let's put it all together, as well as the more expensive issues. For instance, there are two schools, I found out, the Sullivan and the Wang, that have brand-new, I'm going to get the word wrong because I didn't write it down, compressors on the roof, right, that this was done 10 years ago, but the request for proposal didn't include the actual hooking up with the system in the building. So we're not using those compressors, so 10 years of that, right? And so my thinking is, we need to get together with the city as partners. So first of all, let's figure out what each school needs and what are the costs. To me, shades and screens are low-level costs. That is not going to be a huge amount of money. And if you know from your own home, it can make a real difference. If you pull the shade down, open the window, especially at night when the temperatures drop. The more expensive stuff, yeah, the HVAC, we're going to have to look at that school by school, get cost estimates. But the key to this, Your Honor, is that, and why I've included it right in the motion, and I hope my colleagues will support this, is for the mayor to get the city and the schools together, because I know we've got some extra money, and the superintendent can correct me if I'm wrong, I thought it was about 18.5 million, let's round it and say 20 million that we're allocating. Oh, it's 50, okay. I've heard the city's going to have a chunk of money, too, that could be used for upgrading our buildings, and frankly, they are all our buildings, right? We are the tenants, our kids, but it's all belongs to the city. So I see this as a key part of this motion. Once we figure out what our needs are, those low-line fruit, get that out of the way, the shades, the screens, the more complicated ones, you know, might take more time, more cost, we need to sit down with our colleagues on the city side and come up with a timeline, a plan, and a plan not only for getting the work done, but for sharing those costs. Like if we're going to pony up 15 million, what's the city going to contribute? Because 15 million's not going to be enough. We know that, right? So that's my thinking, and as I said, I have talked to people at the different facilities. They know what they need, so it's just a matter of compiling that information and meeting with our city colleagues to get the plan in place. Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Motion passes. This seems like a good point to just, need a motion to suspend the rules, just to bring in a, Mr. Dakota wanted to bring an update on the banned equipment, so motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Ms. Doherty, Mr. Dakota? You want to give an update on the banned equipment? Yeah, it's a good point where we're discussing facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday morning, and this is for the million viewers that aren't aware and probably saw things on TV, but on Saturday morning, just past midnight, a water joint broke, spilling thousands upon thousands of gallons of water into the basement of the 1922 building. It wasn't discovered until Monday morning. The abandoned chorus rooms were filled with six feet of water, covering all the instruments and equipment found in the lower levels. Several student-owned and school instruments have been lost. Along with these instruments, several amplifiers and speakers were also underwater and had to be thrown out. Many costumes and visual art supplies were also destroyed, along with damage to much of the restaurant's floor and so forth. Six file cabinets located in the chorus room were submerged completely and expanding so much with the water and the paper inside those file cabinets that it buckled, it actually buckled the fronts of the drawers of the file cabinets, just exploded out. I would like to recognize the work of Rick Underwood and his staff, all the custodians, along with Jessica DeViso, Fine Arts Chair, Michael Winslow, Ben Talston, Lenny Machado, and a very special thank you to WCAP's Ryan Johnston, who personally reached out to Ernie Block Jr. and his music charitable organization, Music Drives Us. We understand that he wants to work with us to create solutions to this problem. In closing, it never ceases to amaze me how the Lowell community always steps up to help those in need. I want to thank all of you who have reached out to me, offering help, fundraising, anything we need, they've already jumped into it, financial or otherwise. So I want to say thank you for your time. I think that this is, has been a very up-and-down week, very disappointing to have that happen to what was my home for 18 years. To see all of that destruction just broke my heart, and... I know that so many people are going to make sure that we get back to normal. Thank you.
Thanks for the update, Mr. Dakota. Back to the agenda, we have Subcommittee, 7-1, Human Resource and Labor Relations Subcommittee, it was already reported out, so we just need approval of the minutes of the Thursday, May 27th, meeting, 2021. Motion to accept by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Clark. All those in favor? And then Ms. Clark, meeting on Thursday, June 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on Thursday, June 10th, we met, the Human Resources and Labor Relations Subcommittee met to go over all of the positions that had been identified as... met to go over all of the positions that had been identified as in suspense. And so I'm going to share with you the results of that meeting. And we have a few motions to vote on. So we spoke about the virtual school positions and it was decided by the committee at that time to keep those positions in suspense until we receive more information. So no action on, on that at this point. There was a, with, in regard to the Renaissance School Positions, there was a motion to eliminate the school climate specialist, data inquiry facilitators, academic coaches, and bilingual family liaisons from the Renaissance School Packet in the suspense account and return the funds to the Renaissance School Site Councils for deciding where and how to apply that money. So at this point, I would like to put those on the floor in the form of a motion.
Motion by Ms. Clark, second by Mr. Dakota. Any discussion? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was not able to attend that personnel subcommittee meeting. I was out of state for a wedding. I'm just wondering if we're applying it back to the school site councils, like, is there a plan, let's say with the, the cultural, and I'm, I'm losing my space on that, what that position, climate support specialists, right? If they did want to put those positions in, I, I understand that they could reinstate those. My concern is, where is the support and oversight for those roles? And, and maybe that's another conversation about the organizational chart and how that would fit in. But did the personnel subcommittee discuss that at all, or? I don't know.
Yeah, if I could, Ms. Clark? The principals supervise those roles, so it wouldn't adjust your organizational chart at all. They would report to the principals. The principals would then report to Mr. Skinner.
Okay, so professional development for that group wouldn't happen then? In terms of, because if you think about a cohort of people, like, let's say our social workers, and they're spread out all over the district, but as a group, they can grow and develop in their practice by professional development and resources like that. I mean, that would just be, that's a question that comes to my mind about a, a role like that, that where's the support around that role?
It'd be coordinated by the principal and Mr. Skinner.
Okay.
All set? Again, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just specific to those positions, and I know Ms. Clark will be getting to it, I'm sure she goes through her report, but we did also make a motion to require social worker licensure for those positions, which hadn't been in place before. So if one of the schools does choose to reinstate those positions on their own as part of their, their site council, the job description would not require that they are a licensed social worker. And I, in addition, would be able to access all the, the other opportunities that social workers have.
Thank you. So I need a roll call.
Can I actually, may I clarify or ask a question? Because are we, Ms. Martin, are you asking then that the school's climate specialist position just convert to a social worker position? Or that they require the social worker licensure, but also have the roles and responsibilities that are outlined in the job description of school climate specialists?
The motion that I had made at the subcommittee and that was passed was that the climate specialist position remains, however, it does now have a qualifications requirement of a social worker license.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Ms. Doherty?
I, I just wanted to add to that. I think that's a very good direction to be going in. I don't know if anybody's been following what's happening in Boston about using not licensed social workers to do counseling with students and how that's kind of blown up in their face. We need the, the licensure means something, so I, I think that's a good move. And I'm, I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Dela?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Is there more then?
Yes, so the next position that, oh, I'm sorry. So we took, that was just about the, putting all of those positions back in the, back to the Renaissance School Site Councils. So the next motion is the school climate specialist with the licensure, the addition of the social worker licensure. So that's a second motion that came from the subcommittee, and so we're putting it forward here for a roll call.
Okay, any discussion? Motion approved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dela. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Dela?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Continue.
Thank you. So we also discussed the associate head of school job description. It was passed and it will, we will be voting on it later in this meeting, so I'd like to defer to that, the time that's already allotted for that later in the meeting. The next motion that came forward from the subcommittee is to revise the parent, family advocate job description and provide an engagement plan.
Any questions on that? Ms. Martin?
I'm sorry, just, I, I think if you could repeat that, revise?
Sorry, revise the parent and family advocate job description, as well as the engagement plan that we discussed?
So they'll be coming back then to be approved?
Correct.
Once they're revised?
Right, right.
Thank you.
Sorry, so yeah, I guess it's not really a motion is needed, it's just more of a instructions to the administration? So it will stay in the suspense account for now? Okay. So then we also discussed the director of technology, moving that from, that position from the suspense account and posting it. We have that as a item later in this meeting that we'll be voting on, so if we can do that at this, at that time. The next, the next motion or decision coming from the subcommittee is to take the deputy chief academic chair funds that were tied to that position and move that to the supply line.
Okay. Any questions on that? So I need a motion to approve by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Dela?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
And we also spoke about the positions, these following positions that we have decided to leave in the suspense account, the coordinator of research and accountability, and the assistant director of facilities. So no action at this time on those positions. Those are the summary of the minute, so a motion to accept the report is a report of progress.
Ms. Doherty?
Sorry, I, I don't know if I missed it. Did you mention the coordinator of culturally and linguistically sustaining practices? If that position, what happened with that position?
It remains in suspense.
Oh, so, so there's going to be more information? Okay. All right, thank you.
So to accept the report of progress by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Dela. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, report to superintendent, Mrs. Superintendent?
Uh, thank you. Before we get to the reports, just an update for the committee, there was guidance at the subcommittee meeting to proceed even prior to this meeting with moving the funds to the Renaissance Schools to work with. So Mr. Skinner's been already convening those meetings, they're already involved in that work. We'll bring back those recommendations to the committee as soon as they are ready, but no later than the July meeting, so that we can have those resources converted to services to four students on day one. So thank you, committee, for that guidance. That work is currently underway. With that.
One second, excuse me. Ms. Doherty?
I just want to know, do we know what amount of money is that, that's going to be going back to the, is it the same amount for all six?
No, it moves through the fair student funding. You have approximately, it's approximately two hundred thousand dollars per Renaissance School and approximate, slightly more in most schools. We can send you the exact numbers and figures under separate cover. Approximately. Approximately.
So they will, now each school will convene their school site council again?
Sorry, no, not my, convene their school site councils again and say, we now have an additional two hundred thousand. What's your wish list of things? And then will they be defending those decisions before your team, or will it come directly to us?
It'll be coming through the same process for fair student funding, so it'll flow through the school site collaborative process that we do centrally. Mr. Skinner's been supporting them. So what they'll be using is the turnaround practices from the state of Massachusetts, as well as their school site improvement plans. They'll be working to coordinate that across resources needed to support kids.
Great, thank you.
Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, it's my great honor to introduce for the final time to the committee, the great Dr. Guillory with his final report to the committee. If I can remind Dr. Guillory of the message that I gave to our graduating seniors, be bright, be brief, and be gone. With all love and due respect, there is a, and you shall see why, Dr. Guillory, after you conclude your message here with the update on the fourth quarter KPIs.
Thank you, Dr. Boric. So with that message, are there any questions about the report that you have in hand?
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, based on our last meeting, I wanted to know how many high school kids were failing two or more core classes? And I know you've got the breakdown here for quarter four by math, ELA. Do we have a number of, or what percentage or what number of students are failing two or more?
At this point, what we did was we just ran it by the, by the individual courses. So the team would need more time to actually aggregate that data, but it's certainly available now that the students have closed out. I think more importantly, those students that are target, that have failed or did not graduate or being targeted for a summer school opportunity, so the high school's already working on that, well aware of that for the students and families.
Thank you. I look forward to getting that information when it's available.
Ms. Dela?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I also noticed that the, the number on the far right, fourth quarter, their math, ELA and social, and the social studies, I thought that the number was a little bit high, and it's my opinion, and I don't, I don't know if we have a plan to, to help those students or, or to, to do something so that they can pass at the end of the year.
So sure, so it's, so it's two things. So it's one thing to, let's not make the assumption that these students have failed the year necessarily, because this is the fourth quarter. So it's the classic, all of us, I think, have been in college, high school and that type of thing. And we, if we make a ninety the first marking period, a ninety the second marking period, a ninety the third marking period, fourth marking period, I don't have to pay as close attention if I choose not to, because I sort of know where I need to land in that regard. So, but this, these numbers that you're seeing here are reflective of the fourth marking period, not the students in terms of the year. So that information would have to be aggregated. So rather than bog the high school down with going through these additional measures, with their, closing out their graduation, then the flood and all those types of things, we have this first data pool and certainly additional data analysis can be available upon request.
Any other questions? Ms. Doherty?
Sorry, I just had a quick follow-up question regarding?
Don't be sorry, go ahead. Don't be sorry.
Regarding the chronic absenteeism, and I, you know, I noticed we're at twenty percent, which is a reduction from quarter one. I'm wondering, what is the state average for chronic absenteeism? I know it's been an unusual year anyway, but just do we know, like, what we're up against in terms of other districts?
So once the state does its final pull, that information will be communicated out, but I don't know that the final, I don't have the final analysis as of yet, but that's something we can certainly look into. But I think Ms. Martin asked this question maybe about a month or at the last report out. And what I saw actually on the news later that night was that most districts were sort of in this ballpark of where we are, some were lower, some were higher. But certainly, this is something that's not unique to us, but I think something that schools are very aware and supporting, looking at. And I mean, I think the, the bigger pieces is looking at are, the bigger pieces are looking at the students that typically fall in this boat, that have the historical context of being sort of chronically absent. And then the pandemic has certainly added new students to that category as well. So all of those pieces, schools are keeping a very close eye on.
So just to follow up on that, we're just getting the fourth quarter numbers here. And we're just getting seniors, right? I mean, to get the full picture, we really need to know how every year, how every class is done, the freshmen, the, you know. So will, is that information that's going to be coming?
I can't make that determination for you, but certainly I think that's a conversation that you can have. It's certainly a request that can go out, but the reason that you don't have that information is remember, today was the last day of school. So at the time of this reporting, those students were still very much in session and teachers I know are working final grades. The period is open right now. So if I would have pulled anything from you, for you, it would have been inaccurate.
Well, not for quarter one, quarter two, and quarter three. That's happened.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, you know, to only have, just have the last quarter for seniors.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I was just curious about the meal distribution, because that jumped up significantly and was just curious what, what that was about, and also what is the plan for summer?
Dr. Hall?
There's going to be meals served at all the schools that have summer programming, and the remote sites will be reduced down to the STEM and I believe the Lincoln and the Butler. I'll have to send information to the committee with the exact details. I don't remember the exact sites now, but we did pass out extra meals in anticipation of the site shutting down at the end of school, and we're going to pick up with summer school and the reduced in-person sites. And that's because we don't have enough staffing to keep up the same load of remote sites while operating the summer location.
All set? Anyone else? Okay, district enrollment?
If I could, as a point of privilege, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as I mentioned, this is Dr. Guillory's last report to the school committee, and I think this is an opportune time for us to share with Dr. Guillory how important he's been to our school community over the last two years and to thank him for his service to our schools, to our children, to our staff, to the entire city of Lowell. I mentioned briefly, be bright, be brief, be gone. That's advice for public speaking, it's not advice for Dr. Guillory. We hope you make yourself available often to our schools and our children. This, many of you know, is the second district that I've had the opportunity and the honor of working with Dr. Guillory. And whether it be in Boston or here in Lowell, his dedication to our children, his dedication to students, his dedication, most specifically to our highest need and most at-risk children, is uncompromising, uncompromised and unparalleled in anything that he does, no matter the pressure or the stress placed upon him. Dr. Guillory has risen to the occasion. As was the case in Boston, such was the case here in Lowell, that very quickly, he made himself a part of the community, an active part of the community, and someone that our schools are now saying, how can we do without? I am sure that Mr. Skinner will do all that he can to fill Dr. Guillory's shoes, but Mr. Skinner, as being someone who reported to Dr. Guillory previously, knows how big those shoes are. So Dr. Guillory, if you could, if you can join me here, I have a token of appreciation on behalf of the city of Lowell and Lowell Public Schools for your dedication and service to the children of Lowell Public Schools. So a man of few remarks. So a man of few remarks. We're going to offer the opportunity, if you wanted to share any remarks.
Thank you again for this remarkable opportunity. I've certainly enjoyed my time here in Lowell, certainly working with some of the best and brightest leaders, staff members and students and families. So I appreciate the opportunity and wish you much and continued success.
So the running joke, Mr. Skinner, is it doesn't take a rocket scientist. Well, Dr. Guillory happens to be a rocket scientist coming to us from NASA, so we'll have to find another joke somehow. I, I don't know what that one shall be, but we'll figure it out. Welcome, Mr. Skinner, to your new role. And, Dr. Guillory, it's not goodbye, it's good luck. You shall be a partner in the work for your entirety of your tenure in Brookline as well. We wish you well, and we know the children will be better off from having you in the seat as superintendent, so good luck, my friend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eight point two is the enrollment report that's provided to the committee for your review. It's our standard enrollment report, but if you recall, given the fact and given the situation with enrollment, it's always important to note that our district enrollment report includes any student has been identified for any type of district service who has come into the Family Resource Center. Often, there are a number of children who will show up on our service report who are not part of our enrollment student count that leads to our enrollment-based funding in October. So it's always important to keep that in mind. I know you'll see a bottom line number there that might have you a little bit enthused that we might be overcoming some of the declining enrollment. I just remind the committee of our share out from a couple of months ago, that there are a number of data points there that wouldn't count within the parameters of funding, but are receiving services through Lowell Public Schools in some way that are identified for that report. With that, I submit it to you for, for the record.
Thank you. Any questions on the enrollment, Ms. Darney?
I'm just wondering why the homeschooled only says three.
Ms. Phillips?
So I don't have that answer for you, but we can get that information.
The previous report, the number relates to the number of homeschool students who are also receiving some type of service through the public schools. Not all of our students who are identified for homeschool service are receiving services of any kind through our schools. Ms. Desmond, I believe these numbers related to individuals that might be tracked through services through your office for some way, and likely is the case here, but we can review it.
Could you repeat that one more time?
Sure, there are, there are some students that are identified and make the request for homeschool.
Right.
So they're homeschool students, they're not district students, but they are receiving some type of service through the district that we still continue to offer. Not everybody take, not every student takes us up on that opportunity, so these students are receiving some type of service typically through Ms. Desmond's office as homeschool students. She would have to review the individual students to see if that's the case here and to share with you what services, unless you have that top of mind, Ms. Desmond.
So this represents the registrations in Aspen, and if a student wants to attend a program within a neighborhood school, so if you are a homeschool student, you do have the opportunities to participate in activities in neighborhood schools, but in order to do that, we need to register you in Aspen so that the school has access to your contact information and emergency information. Sometimes this number is higher, but because of COVID, we have been remote, so that number has, is, is much smaller than it typically is.
Thank you. All right, so I need a motion to accept the reports.
Question?
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we happen to know a ballpark number, not a specific number, but a ballpark number of the difference between the numbers we gave Desi in September? Was that the first set of numbers that go, go to them, or October? And was there a significant jump after those numbers were given?
Dr. Guillory, do you happen to have those figures within the KPIs? Or Ms. Turner, do you have them within the budget figures? If not, we can provide them to you under separate cover.
Just curious, thank you.
All set? I need a motion to, let's see, report, to report of progress by Ms. Clark, second by Mr. Dakota. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New business budget transfer, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I hand the microphone over to our chief financial officer to share the recommendation for our final budget transfer of the fiscal year, I wanted to provide a, a little bit more good news as a follow-on to Mr. Dakota's message earlier. We have, we have received a verbal commitment of significant financial support from Music Dr, Music Drives Us for instrumental and music equipment that was lost in the flood, Hollywood Salvage for costumes and other theater equipment that was lost in the flood, and Subaru of New England for any improvements within the range of fifty thousand dollars that may be made to the physical space of the band room and music space at Lowell High School. Altogether, those three verbal commitments are significant and extraordinarily well-appreciated, and I want to follow on to Mr. Dakota's mention, it's truly great to live in a community that rallies together on behalf of our children and families during the toughest of times. Special thank you to WCAP and Ryan Johnston specifically, who made that connection, that outreach, and most importantly, a, a thank you to Ernie Bach Jr. Had a, an, a great conversation with him earlier, just a pleasure to work with and a true commitment to our children and the arts. So thank you to Ernie Bach Jr., thank you to Music Drives Us, Hollywood Salvage, Subaru of New England. As we get more, more details, we will certainly share that out with the community, and of course, any donation will come to the committee for approval at the appropriate time to determine whether you're willing to formally accept it, but I think you can hear what my recommendation shall be when that time comes. So thank you to Ernie Bach Jr., thank you to the WCAP team, and thank you to Ryan Johnston. With that, everybody that Mr. Dakota thanked for their hard work there, particular thank you to Jess DeVisa, who's been working to make sure that our full inventory is accurate of everything that was lost. Our teachers are continuing to do extraordinary work, as is our facility staff, through what was a truly unfortunate event to enter the school on Monday, too. So thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, which I think rel, certainly relates to what might be top of mind for the committee as you're going to talk about a budget transfer, Ms. Turner, if you could share with the committee our recommendation for their final transfer of the fiscal year?
As you know, all throughout the year, we've been monitoring all of the spending and doing monthly projections so that we didn't have a year-end surprise. This allowed us to do the March third transfer where we moved money into accounts that gave us a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to invest in things that are, that have historically been undefunded, like technology. And then we later did another transfer in May to do another investment in musical equipment, string equipment, art supplies, phys ed equipment, all of those type of things. After we did our final projection, we still have a three million dollar remaining balance, and it is our responsibility to try to spend that on the students and not just let it flow back, because when we do that, we risk not meet in net school spending. So I'm always determined to try to figure out what the remaining balance is in advance so that we don't leave anything on the table. Of the three million dollars, we have four hundred and forty-one thousand that we kept aside because we had year-end PD scheduled. We have eight hundred and thirty-four thousand of that amount that we want to replenish the circuit breaker revolving account so that we have a healthy fiscal balance. Again, those are like savings accounts that help us in rainy days. And then of that three million dollars, we also needed to earmark two hundred thousand for sped transportation, being that the students went back. We ended up having an influx of students that needed special ed transportation. That left a, a balance of approximately one point four million dollars. Your transfer that you received on Friday said one point five million dollars. It's, I, I uploaded on Monday before the forty-eight hour mark a revised one, so that you could see both and it wouldn't be confusing. All we did is adjust one purchase order, it was charged to a grant, we moved it to the local budget. So we went down from one point five million to one point four million for the final transfer recommendation. As I just explained, we've been trying to be strategic on what we invest in so that it's not frivolous spending. This final transfer, what we're recommending is to move the available dollars, we can no longer, we can't spend it anymore, being that the spending deadline passed with the city. So at my last, during the last meeting, I explained that that transfer would allow us to do the final spending, but that this transfer, we, we don't want to just waste this available balance, so this transfer, we want to move into the sped stabilization account. The strategic implications of doing this would be that it would help us with the inevitable bad bills that we receive every year with special ed, out-of-district cost. As you know, DCF, that we just had two students placed on our roster recently, and they were students that never even attended Lowell Public Schools. They were never our student, there's no way we would have known they existed. What happened is if they're placed by DCF, the state determines that one of their parents live in Lowell, then they make us share the cost, so they'll retroactively bill us for a year, so of course, that's a bad bill. So for people to understand that there's nothing we can do to control that. So it's inevitable, and if we have the sped stabilization account funded, that is for unanticipated or unbudgeted special ed costs, out-of-district cost, or special ed transportation. So that fund will allow us to always, we'll have to go through the normal process of going before the city council, but we will be able to assure them that we already have our own funding source, which would be the sped stabilization money. So that, that's my recommendation, to move the available balance into that. And just as, to, to be transparent, we, I, I don't want to leave a dollar on the table if we could, but this is our final allowable transfer. So after this, if anyone cancels purchase orders, or if they don't spend their full PD, there may be a few hundred thousand that flows to the city to help maybe offset the cost of the roof for the freshman academy or some other project like that.
Okay, so what's, what's the final number tonight, then?
The final number is one million, three hundred eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
And is the difference out of this sheet you gave us?
The, the difference, you have both sheets on the upload, just so that it was transparent, but it is the second one, it says revised budget transfer. It's on this, too. Oh, do you want me to read the transfer, you mean?
Well, no, I, I just, I don't have any paperwork, so I don't know what you mean by, it's on our computers, you mean?
Yeah, it's on the uploaded agenda. It's, it's on your, the Agenda Central, and it was part of the packet.
All right, just, I think next time you should bring a hard copy for us, though, for the meeting.
Okay, wasn't in your packet? Usually they're in your packet.
Well.
Oh, you mean after?
I don't, I got two reports.
The packet number says.
I understand what you mean. You mean that you've got the packet on Friday, so whatever I changed on Monday, I should bring a hard copy in the future, okay?
Yeah, to the meeting.
Okay.
So where did, do you have any information on where you pulled the money from?
Yes, I do. It's on the sped contracted service line, which is the fourth line down on the right-hand side. It originally was two hundred and thirty-one thousand, and we have changed that to like a hundred, and I'm trying to find it now. We have changed.
So it just came out of that one category?
Right, we reduced that amount from two hundred and thirty-one, that's the only line that changed in the total.
And then just one other question. The supplies and textbook line, twenty-five thousand, five seventy-six, where did that, general monies, or is that money that was collected from all the schools?
No, that's actually the total central wide, and as you can recall, we transferred a lot of money into that line, so we could do all the music purchases and art supplies. That's what's remaining after. When they would go out for quotes, you get a quote, and then the final bill could come in cheaper.
Okay. Any questions on the transfer? Ms. Darney?
I guess, so if I understand you, the four hundred and forty-one thousand that's earmarked for professional development, that hasn't been spent yet?
That's the PD that the schools have scheduled for their year-end, it's not our big PD account, it's actually the individual schools when they earmark money for PD. So we, we did a project where we asked them how much they anticipate spending of whatever remaining dollars they had, and it equaled four hundred and forty-one thousand, so it is scheduled already.
So they'll be doing the professional development?
They do it, the individual schools are doing their own PD.
Like next week?
Yes.
Okay. And this is to pay for, for faculty, for staff salaries? Pay staff for the time? Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions? Motion to, do a roll call on this, right?
Yes.
So motion by Ms. Clark, second by Ms. Darney, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
Nine, two.
Thank you. This permission to post for a music teacher, program manager for arts enrichment is a follow-on to the presentation that you heard and the request from the committee to bring this for permission to post subsequent to the presentation of the Arts Chair during a meeting in May. I don't have the date in front of me, I apologize, but it was a May meeting. I'm hearing nods, you recall, the recommendations approval is written.
Any questions on this, Ms. Darney?
Motion to approve.
Oh, motion approved by Ms. Darney, second by Mr. Lay, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
Nine, three.
This is the permission to post for the Lowell High School Associate Head of School, following the recommendation of the Personnel Subcommittee. Recommendations approval is written.
We have a speaker here, registered speaker, Shelby Bovier, Boziver? Sorry.
Hi, my name is Shelby Bovier, I live at eleven A Delilah Way in Hudson, New Hampshire. I'm the current Lowell School Administrators Association President. I would like to first start by saying thank you to the Lowell School Committee and to the staff of the Lowell Public Schools, and most importantly, our teachers and educators for getting through a truly challenging year in education and doing so with professionalism and grace. We have been attending school committee meetings virtually since the onset of the pandemic and appreciate the attention to detail and care for the well-being of the Lowell Public Schools that you have all shown through this challenging time. I'm here tonight in order to speak on behalf of the LSAA and voice our concerns about positions that this administration has continued to create with specific focus on being created outside of our unions. We are coming out of a very difficult year in education. All unions, from our custodial staff, clerks and paras, to our administrators and our teachers, have been greatly impacted by this pandemic, but it's our students that need us the most. In a year of record student failures and trunacies, we need to be completely transparent, mindful, and thoughtful about how we are going to spend money and budget for this upcoming school year. We need to make sure that when we are adding positions, we are adding qualified Desi-like individuals to work within our district. As LSAA President and on behalf of our union, we do not support the creation of yet more administrative positions which will be suited outside of the union, especially when positions we, especially when we have such positions paralleled many of these new positions, create proposed new positions in existence within our union. In more specific terms, I'm happy to hear that the climate specialist will have to have a social work licensure, however, I want to make sure that if we're looking at our climate specialist within the district as being something that our school site councils are looking to implement, that they become social workers. If we need more social workers and guidance counselors in our school, that is what we should have, there is licensure programs for that. Our social workers, guidance counselors, and psychologists are licensed in these areas. It is our job to be climate specialist. We have done that for years. As we as a district have a responsibility to our students, we must provide them with highly trained staff. Our students have trauma issues, and these issues require a certain level of professional training to deal with them. This level does not exist with a climate specialist simply being appointed. If we are in need of those supports, let us make sure that our students get them with licensed, qualified, union professionals. There is a position being discussed this evening that is also the Associate Head of School. This position currently exists within our union. It is the master position, which has gone unfilled since Dave Morehouse retired, but the position exists, and it has existed in our union for decades. You cannot simply add a few responsibilities, change the name, and try to slide it through as a non-union position. It is something which will leave this district open to litigation. I want to be clear that the LSAA does indeed see the need for this position, and I, as a colleague who works at the high school, do support the need for this in addition to this position. However, the position exists, the master position, and it is a union-affiliated position and should remain so within the LSAA. This is the right hand of the head of school, and it has always been, so why are we trying to just change the name and add it to the bag of positions? So why are we trying to just change the name and add it to the bag of positions which this administration has obtained under his supervision? Another position being discussed this evening is the Director of Communication, Information, and Technology. This position, when originally posted in the early nineties, was also within the LSAA. The first two individuals to hold the position, Dr. Steve Aronoff and Susan Burrell, were members of the LSAA. The LSAA agrees that this position should also be filled. Technology is ever-changing, and given that each student has his or her own Chromebook this year, we acknowledge the need for an individual who can not only run the department, but who can also keep up with the pace of the change. Many years ago, Lowell was at the forefront of technology revolution. Let us get back to being at the forefront by reinstating this position within the LSAA. There is simply no valid operational reason to exclude this position as an LSAA union position. In the last fifteen years, we have lost and/or eliminated over twenty-two positions with the LSAA, many of these being alternately named positions within this district without union affiliation. In a year where we are receiving additional monies for having gone through this pandemic, as much of our funding as possible should be used for services and positions which directly impact our students and their learning outcomes. High-level administrative support under the sole supervision of the superintendent is not something that we as a union can support. I am urging you to review the documents that we have previously provided to you in email regarding all of the positions and why they should be affiliated within the LSAA, along with the chart that we presented you with all of the positions that we've lost. Please reflect on this. The district, since the hiring of Dr. Boyd, has approved and spent millions on salaried central office administrators who are non-union and non-direct service providers for students. But here we are entertaining adding more positions to that list and/or adding positions that do not possess the same educational attainment, level of training, and DESI licensure that we and our LSAA members have. We truly are looking out for the best interest of our students by pressing you, as a school committee, to please consider these positions, which the district is trying to create, and if deemed necessary, to please ensure that they are properly affiliated with the unions in which they should be. In addition, we are urging you to use the extra monies that this district has received to benefit our students in the most direct ways as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, so you hit both motions, right? Yeah, okay, thank you. All right. So where are we now?
We're on item nine point three, the Lowell High School Associate Head of School. The recommendations approval as written.
Any questions? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wonder if the superintendent or a member of this team could explain to us what are the differences in the position from the previously mentioned role, because I think there are some differences.
Yeah, this is significantly similar to the head of school in order to operate as an associate head of school, including involvement in bargaining, which excludes it then from the union. It can't bargain and be a part of the bargaining team as the associate head of school is if it's affiliated with the union, and the law is fairly clear on that. So it's a difference in understanding of how the job operates, as well as a difference in understanding of the legal precedent. We have discussed that all with the union for that particular position. It is significantly and substantively different from any other position that we previously had based on the current needs of the school.
Thank you. Could you also mention, address the bullet, reviews and advises head of school on disciplinary matters and investigations related to teachers and administrators? Is that also different from the previous role that was similar?
The most recent role, I believe you're referring to, which you've mentioned a couple of times, Ms. Doherty, was related to the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, which is also an LSAA job. That particular bullet does substantively make this different. This is an evaluative level, an evaluation level position that, within the organizational chart, as Mr. Fiatto shared, reports directly to him and allows him, at this time, to have another supervisory level beyond the current management level at the school. So it runs twofold, both providing direct support to students and also providing supervisory support to both administrators and teachers within the school, including evaluation level capacity.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Martin?
I would ask the same kind of comparison question regarding the Director of Technology.
My understanding is that's a restored position that was not part of the union at its most recent iteration, so it's restored from its most recent iteration, at which point it was not part of the union. So that's a local internal precedent, as well as statewide precedent around that particular position. What's most important for the committee, I believe, is the local precedent. You're restoring a position to its previous status. At the point, I believe, Ms. Desmond, that was two thousand seventeen, sixteen. So this was one of the positions that the committee, I believe, reluctantly cut during the significant budget constraints you were experiencing. We're restoring it to the same status it was previously, and that was unaffiliated.
Ms. Doherty?
I would just like to make a comment. I completely support both these positions. We absolutely need that number two person at the high school, and I think that these changes seem significant enough that it would warrant, I am somebody on the record who I support having those climate specialists get the licensure, you know, because we need those certifications. They mean something. But in this case, I think that the superintendent has made a compelling argument that this position is going to be really more in a leadership supervisory role, as well as advising on collective bargaining, which I know is always a challenge for the head of school, for the head of the high school. So I am going to support that. Thank you.
Any other questions now? Move to approve by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Lay, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Nine, four.
I believe there we just need a motion. I believe that discussion was had, Mr. Mayor.
No questions? All right. Motion by Ms. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Five shades, one day, one absent, approved.
Nine, five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This relates to additional funds that are now available through the state in adjusting the rate of pay for a special rate of pay for teachers. The information is directly within you or packet. If you have any questions, Ms. Desmond is available. Recommendations approval as written.
Any questions on this one? Joe, Ms. Doherty?
Yes, I do have questions about this. I don't know if my colleagues got the emails. This, I'm just wondering why this pays so much higher. I mean, we have really good people who stepped up and agreed to teach summer school. We've done this huge expansion on summer school after a very difficult year, and they're being compensated, I believe it's thirty dollars an hour. And this, what's the compensation rate working out for this, like a hundred dollars an hour? Can somebody explain to me?
Yeah, this is a difference that was established through DESI, and this runs in accordance with this particular aspect of the grant. There is a discrepancy and a disparity there.
Huge.
It's certainly a valid question and valid concern. Ms. Desmond, can you share the parameters around this particular grant award and how it gets allocated?
Sure. This is a recent grant opportunity that the state has released, and it is for a full-day, five-day-a-week summer program that's intensive. There's very specific guidelines and parameters to this grant, one of which is the pay rate for the teachers. The Department of Ed's hope is that we are getting our strongest teachers in front of our children during this accelerated academy. It is recognized that they will be in school for a full day, not a partial day like our traditional summer school. And it is for intensive reading instruction for our K and one students that are significantly below grade level and for our second and third grade students who are significantly below grade level in mathematics. So we have applied for the grant. We have set it up. Again, it's been a very quick turnaround. We only received the information on the grant a few weeks ago, but we have set it up so that it is a week after our summer school program. So we're not competing with our summer school program. So any teacher who's teaching in our traditional summer school program can apply to teach in this program as well. Our hope would be that our students not only participate in our standard summer school program, but that they also get this extra week of intensive instruction. We do have parameters around who may attend, and schools are currently looking at their data to invite students to this program. So as soon as we receive the funding, I will let the committee know, but because the timeline is so tight, we really need to post the position so that we can make sure that we have the staffing for the program. So again, the program will be at the end of July after our traditional summer school is over. Our traditional summer school is paying the union hourly rate. Teachers will be in school for four hours a day for four weeks, and we are providing considerable amount of preparatory time and hours for our teachers so that they're able to be paid to prepare for summer school. So that's the update I have right now.
Mr. Lay?
I just pulled my calculator, do it really quick. I could be wrong, but it turned out to be five hours a day for, I mean, six hours a day for four days, for five days. I think the rate is around twenty-five dollars an hour and not a hundred, three thousand. Anyway, I could be wrong, but.
Ms. Clark?
For this program, is there also busing?
Yes, there is busing, and there is, there will also be allied arts or specials built into the schedule, because the children will be in school for the full day. We wouldn't be paying an hourly rate for a full day of school anyways, based on the contract for the teachers. If we were to have teachers work a full day, we would pay a per diem rate.
Thank you. I think this is a great opportunity for our students who may be falling behind, and so to get them ready for next academic year. So I would make a motion to approve this as written.
Okay, quick, okay, quick question. So do we have, Mr. Superintendent, if it, do we get to choose who, once everybody applies, how do we decide who gets picked for this?
Dr. Hall, can you share how summer employment works?
The program administrators will pick who they think is best for the job.
And is there, what's the truth about the pay rate? So there is significant pay rate, discrepancy for this?
Yeah.
Definitely.
So if I could just add to that, I really appreciate what Ms. Desmond said, that it's the week after summer school. So those staff who stepped up, they could participate if they have the experience. My understanding is you need, and I don't know where I read it, something like four hours, I mean, four years minimum or more than that teaching experience. So you have to be an experienced teacher, and I would think for the reading part, maybe you have to have a licensure as a reading specialist. So there are requirements that would kind of section off who is eligible to apply. My understanding, if it's three thousand dollars for thirty hours, it's a hundred dollars an hour, but there might be some PD built in that. But I think a lot of what Chief Desmond said, at least help me with it, to understand, we've built in professional development for our summer school staff, we're doing it the week after summer school ends, so it's not penalizing those teachers who stepped forward and said, yeah, I'll do summer school. So I think it's, as Ms. Clark said, it's a great opportunity for our kids who are really struggling, and I would second that motion to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? So motion by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Doherty, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yeah, sorry, yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
School calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just an update to the current year calendar. The state did make an adjustment to its holiday calendar to recognize Juneteenth, which is this Saturday. This calendar, in accordance with the state holiday, in typical fashion for this committee, recognizes the observance of a Saturday holiday on Friday. All schools and district offices will be closed. As you know, the last day of school was today, so this observance this year on this date largely reflects closing all of our district offices in observance of the Juneteenth holiday. The recommendations approval as written.
Any other questions? So I see Election Day, November third, right? No school staff day. What do we do for the primary, though?
So as we recall, this is the current year calendar.
Oh, that's still?
Yeah, the year that we're in right now. So this is, the adjustment relates to this Friday coming up two days from now.
Oh, okay. Motion approved by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Lay, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Communications?
This is a procedural communications of the occurrence of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Executive Institute, which I plan to attend for its first couple of days as required. It's submitted to you as a communication for, to accept as a report of progress or a report for file here.
Okay, motion approved by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Clark, roll call. No roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Professional personnel, members of the SEIU hereby donate seventeen six days to Mayor Lou Boucher, Central Office Administration Assistant. Any questions? Motion approved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?